All that ordered the, where are we? June, uh, June, that's right again. The September 18th meeting of the Brainerd Planning Commission. All right, we have a roll call, sir.
Duval.
Present.
Grunewald. Norwood.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Stangline.
Here.
Gorham.
Here. All right. David, do you like to lead us on the pledge of allegiance?
Just kidding.
Sure.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So well done, you get the job next month. Alrighty. We are looking for an approval of tonight's agenda.
So move Norwood.
Second.
Go on.
Any discussion? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pull the same sign. All right, we have an agenda. Looking for approval of the minutes from August, I'll get that right, from the August 21st, 2024 meeting. We have a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Mr. Peterson with the motion?
Second.
I'm gonna take Tiffany on the, uh, on the second there. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. All right, we are rolling on. We are up to new business. We're gonna look at a, um, a variance request for 1306 Chicago Avenue. Anybody really know where Chicago Avenue was before the meeting today? A little bit?
That's what I'm saying.
Took a minute on that one. James, could you bring us up to speed on that one, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the request is to adjust property line to split the parcels into two equal parcels in order to construct a duplex. A variance is required as the proposed parcels would exceed the lot size maximum frontage of 60 feet and would be under the minimum lot size requirement of 5,000 square feet. The proposed building would also require variance from the front yard setback to maintain a rear yard, uh, rear yard setback. For the TN1 dimensional standards, the lot size minimum is 5,000 square feet. The applicants are requesting 4,374. The lot frontage range in the TN1 district is 50 feet to 60 feet. The applicants are requesting 62.5. Uh, the front yard setback range is 20 feet minimum to a 30-foot maximum. They're requesting a 13-foot. This is from kind of that front porch area. This was staff's recommendation as it would provide a greater distance from the rear yard of the house to the neighboring property while ensuring a vehicle could still be parked in the driveway, maintaining a, a 20-foot driveway. Uh, this way the, they would not have to request for a rear yard setback. So with that, variances shall only be permitted when they are in harmony with the general purposes and intent of the ordinance. The TN1 zoning district is intended to provide a compact pedestrian-oriented mix of residential uses. Uh, zoning ordinance allowed use section allows for duplexes as permitted use in the TN1 district. The consolidation of the unusable parcel of land will help create greater residential density within the neighborhood. Uh, also another criteria is when the variances are consistent with the comprehensive plan. Housing Goal One, provide a diverse mix of housing choices for all stages of life, income ranges and ownership slash rental preferences. Policy Two, expand home ownership and rental opportunities through a rehabilitation and new construction. And Policy Five, ensure an adequate supply of quality and affordable housing units for current and future residents. By allowing a potential split down the, uh, I guess two, each of the two units there is, obviously this is gonna create some workforce housing opportunities within the neighborhood, but then also allow in the future for potential sale for home ownership. Uh, another one of the criteria is the plight of the landowners due to circumstances unique to the property not created by the landowner. Uh, so parcel 41250957, this is a smaller one, is 1,750 square feet, which is unusable for construction. The combination of the two parcels allows for construction of a single, uh, level duplex with attached garage. Uh, the setback variance request is a result of this property being on the corner of a major thoroughfare in Brainerd. Uh, the developer originally proposed the driveway coming off of 13th Street Southeast. Uh, when the city engineer did review this, he would not have approved this plan as the driveway would be placed too close to the intersection. Uh, the building was then orientated to face Chicago Avenue with the driveway in, in that location. Another criteria is a variance, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality. This variance, if granted, will not substantially alter the character of the locality as there are other duplexes on the adjacent properties, as noted at the beginning of the findings of fact. So with that, staff recommends approval of the variance request with the following conditions. Contingent upon a property maintenance and party wall agreement provided by the applicant and submitted to the city attorney for his review and comment. Uh, legal review fees incurred by the city are to be paid by the developer. And number two, staff approves final elevation drawings consistent with Section 5154 general building development and design standards prior to issuance of the building permit. I can answer any questions. Um, one of the applicants is present and one of them I believe is online.
Very good. Any questions for James? I have one. Start with Mr. Duval, then with Mr. Peterson.
Director Cronk, um, what's the party wall?
So, um...
I don't understand what that is and what the agreement would be.
So, so it's a duplex. Um, instead of just having the duplex on the one property, there would be, um, a split of the property right down the middle of the duplex duplex. So you could sell one, you could sell the other. Um, so because there's a party wall there and they're owned by separate people, that's where you need some type of property maintenance agreement. If the roof needs to be done, if siding needs to be done, there's essentially an agreement between the two parties that there's a, a building maintenance plan.
So it's like a co- a common wall, is that?
Exactly, yep.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Peterson?
James, I think I probably know the answer, but Chi- Chicago does not go through and it's never going to on that road, right?
That's correct. Uh, it's, it's wetland over there, so I don't think it would ever go through unless you were to build into a wetland.
Parking's not gonna be an issue or traffic on that street anyway. Okay?
Questions on that end? Now, I've got a couple. Um, just procedurally, is it common that we do two variances with one variance fee? It just seems like a, if that's common, we just...
Yeah, we typically do that. Um, you know, when I went through the procedure in Baxter, that's what they did as well when I went through the solar array farm. You can have kind of multiple variances stacking on one.
And the, the same thing with the hearing, we can, we can do that.
Yep.
I was struck by the line talking about, uh, TN1 and, uh, walking and things like this. That strikes me as one of the ter- worst places you'd possibly try to go for a walk there on that, uh, with, with 13th Street and everything. Are there any plans, any plans down the line of a trail running on South, on 13th? Or is that the county's domain?
Potentially the county. Um, the city engineer is the one that works on, uh, on the trail plans, so that's something I'm not aware of.
Okay, very good. Those, those are the questions I had. Uh, with that, I'll open a public hearing at 6:07 on the variance. And if the petitioner, I would invite you to come on up and, uh, let us know what, uh, what the plans are. You don't have to, but it's always helpful. We may have a couple of questions. Name and address would be great and don't be nervous. Come on up.
My name is Jennifer Petrie. I'm with Five Star Home Improvement and, um, I think James covered most of everything that we wanted to go through on this and I am only a portion of this company and so I'm learning as I go. My husband's online and he is the brains, so, um, but otherwise, James covered everything, so, um, I don't really have much to say.
Any questions for Ms. Petrie? Well, long as she's up. I just have a, just a quick question. How many properties do you guys, um, uh, do you own, is this like a first duplex or do you own a series of duplexes? Just out of curiosity?
Um, this is actually the first duplex that, um, we've done. We have built multiple homes in the area, Breezy, um, and so forth around Brainerd, Baxter.
That's the only question I had. Very good. Thank you. If we have anything else, we'll call you back up.
Thank you.
And, um, and your husband's name, I should ask?
Daniel.
Daniel, if you're online, would, uh, would you like to, uh, would you like to speak? He has to, whoops, I think he did it.
Figured it out.
Okay. I'm in the vehicle at the moment, but yes, I'm good to say hello. Hello, this is Daniel.
All right. Well, if you go, just stay on, uh, in case we have some questions, we'll get back to you, but, uh, um, but keep your eyes on the road and we'll, uh, we'll go from there. All right.
No, I'm a pastor, but I appreciate the time.
Okay, very good. Uh, would anybody else like to speak on the, uh, during the, the public hearing? Do we have anybody else online or present? Seeing and hearing none, I will close the public hearing at 6:09 and, uh, I will open discussions. James?
Given the case for the practical difficulty with the front loading be- not being on 13th, I, I will be in favor of, um, of granting for approval of the variance. It would be much more congruent to have that be front loaded on 13th, especially being in a collector street kind of a situation with the rest of the other area, but it not being possible. Um, I believe that it should be granted.
Very good. Other comments or questions from the commissioners? I'll just say I, I think this is a classic example of infill. This is good, this is what we need. Um, I'm still trying to figure a little bit, here's, so the buildings are connected by the garage. Is that what the, what connects the two buildings? Is that right? Because the drawing doesn't really tell me, but it's, they're connected by the garage?
It's connected at the garage.
At the garage? Oh, okay, like, like the one up in the upper left hand there? Yeah, okay, good. That, that helps me understand that.
It's different than what you got there.
It is kind of, well, right, and that's, that's maybe the confusion, because I was kind of looking at this earlier plan, which doesn't really tell me what's going on until I flip the page and then I see that one. And that makes, that makes a lot more sense to me. Now I understand a little more what we're, what we're, uh, what we're doing here. Very good. Um, well, if we're done with discussion, I'd be looking for a motion. I just want to point out to anybody that makes a motion, it'll be important that we include the staff recommendations, because there's some very, uh, specific stack, staff recommendations in there. So I'll open the floor to, uh, to a motion. Either, going either which way.
I'll make a motion to accept it as per staff recommendations.
Very good.
Second.
And we have a second. Any discussion? Hearing no, no discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? All right, what are the next steps for our applicant, James?
Yeah, so this will be heard at the next city council meeting. I'm gonna pull up my calendar here. So that will be, uh, Monday, October 7th at 7:30 PM in the council chambers. Uh, this is a recommending body, so the city council will have final approval or denial of the variance requests.
All right, thank you very much and good luck on your project. Thank you. With that, we move on to unfinished business. We are gonna discuss building design standards. James, do you wanna bring us up to speed? Tell us a little bit about what we, remind us what we did last time.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, so at the last meeting, I provided a memo that kind of outlined sections that I thought, uh, were strengths within the design standard section and then, uh, took a look at sections that I thought could be worked on. Um, you know, really, really worked on that at the last meeting to, uh, to figure out, you know, what you guys want, wanted me to, to, to change in here. So this is really actually putting numbers to some of those things that we talked about in the recommendations that we made. So I figured we kind of go, you know, one by one through these items and discuss if, if you think the numbers that I use or some of the language I use kind of hits the mark. Um, you know, if it seems like there's a kind of a divide in it, maybe we'd take, uh, some type of a vote on it to actually get direction on it. So, uh, so with that, I think we can kind of take a look first at that contemporary neighborhood one CN1 district. Uh, so when looking at that, uh, one of the things, and you'll see this kind of throughout some of these zoning districts, that I saw was potential hangup and I've seen, um, I've seen developers come in or other projects potentially come in that need larger lot sizes. Um, so for instance, in a CN1, you could have a, a church or a school. And right now, we have a 10,000 square feet to 21,780 square feet. Um, so if you were, you know, to, to build over it, we certainly want to see some of these consolidated, um, you'd have to almost go through a variance request to do something like that. Um, same for like a duplex or triplex. Again, if you're exceeding that square footage number, you have to go through a variance request to do an apartment. So this would allow, instead of going through a variance request, it would be a CUP to, you know, exceed that 21,780 square feet. Um, that's, these numbers still seemed appropriate, um, as I was going through the North Town Association, that's kind of a good example of our CN1 districts. Uh, you'll see in the lot frontage, something very similar. I went through North Town and, and saw some of the lots were under 75 square feet, so that's where potentially looked at pulling it back to 70 square feet and saw some of them were just a bit over 90. Um, so that just kind of increased and arranged slightly on that one when looking at, uh, North Town and then when you want to go beyond that 100-foot, it would then require that CUP. Um, then the last part is a discussion that we had about garages. You'll see in the contemporary neighborhood districts, if front loaded, must extend no further than five feet beyond the facade into the front yard or side yard corner. So haven't put it to the graphics, obviously, if this is the route we want to go, graphics will have to be changed as well. Uh, but just wanted to start with this and get kind of a consensus or recommendation from the planning commission if, if this makes sense.
All right, I'll open it to commissioner comments or questions. Got anything, Mike?
I, I do. Thank you. First of all, thanks for the really good discussion you had on this at the last meeting. I was able to, a lot of my questions as I looked this over were answered by going back to the meeting discussion, so I think you covered a lot of that. Um, so this would be, you want comments specific to, to CN1 is?
Yep, that's correct.
You know, the, I, generally I have comments on the garage, um, setback, so I don't know if we want to bundle those later or, um, or, or deal with them on the upfront of, of what the, what the development hardship is, you know, for the CN districts. I, I think I recall from the discussion last month that you had, you'd mentioned North Town and I think Brainerd Oaks, Green Pines, those are all sort of, uh, already established under the older ordinance and so they can do that front forward garage. Do I correctly understand that?
Yeah, so they can do, um, they're under the old ordinance, so when, when I'm reviewing a building plan for them, I'm looking, we still have our previous ordinance up. Uh, you do see it in, um, you know, kind of that Grayden Avenue area, which is maybe 1950s construction, some of the homes in there. Where, right now, we have the five-foot behind. Um, you'll see a lot of ramblers that are, you know, right in line with each other. Some of them, the garages are in front as well, so, again, if you're trying to be consistent with the neighborhood, I'm not sure if the five-foot, you know, behind works for that. You do see, you know, some rear, rear garages or I guess five-foot setbacks or setbacks in some of our older neighborhoods, um, like along Bluff Avenue, that type of thing. But from what I saw, you know, when, when you kind of take a drive-through Grayden, you do see a lot of ramblers that are, you know, right in line with each other, so I'm not sure if, you know, the, that's how I see, you know, potentially splitting the contemporary neighborhoods up from the traditional neighborhoods and having two different design standards, whether it's, you know, contemporary neighborhoods in line and traditional's still five-foot back or, you know, my recommendation is we contemporaries five-foot in front. You are seeing a lot of designs like that right now. Um, you know, so you're kind of, in my opinion, potentially hindering development, uh, when developers come and, and we'd have this, um, ordinance in place. A lot of the ones that are being built in, in Holton by level contracting. The garage is five-foot in front and it still looks nice. They got living quarters above the garage. I think, uh, from the discussion, having that, you know, not that little five-foot entrance, but having porch and nice entryways makes it look nice. So in my opinion, you know, developing, the, the houses that are being developed in Holton are nice homes, the garages are five-foot in front. And it's really gone away from that, you know, that 20-foot garage in the front where that's all you see when, when you go down the street. I don't get that feel when I'm, when I'm driving through Holton. So that's my staff recommendation on that and certainly we'd like to hear comments from the planning commission.
With that, um, if I may follow up then, you know, I mean, it, for the CN1, um, you know, I might, I might be comfortable, I, I might be comfortable with, with in line or, or reducing the five-foot setback to some other measure that gives you a bit of geometry change there. I'm, I'm uncomfortable with, with restoring the ability to put the garage forward in any amount of feet. I think that's getting us back to, I think, to our discussions during the, the ordinance revision, we were, we were heading in the opposite direction there, saying, let's, let's push the, the attached accessory structure back so it's that, it's not the principal feature, the principal feature is the residence. So that would be my thoughts on, on this one here.
Other, anybody else want to weigh in on, specifically, specifically on what Mike's saying?
Yes.
That's the point we gotta work out.
That was actually, and, and so I want to start by apologizing to James, because you asked for this a month ago and I didn't, I needed to stew on it for another month, so I'm glad we're coming back to this. Um, I, I think that our zoning code is not just about matching what is there, but also building what we want to be there and, and that kind of slow progression. And then I guess I have a question for...
We have somebody online? Oh, thank you.
Okay. Um, for Commissioner Peterson who builds houses. Does it cost anymore to build the garage in line than it does to build the garage in front of the facade?
It actually probably costs less to build it in line.
I mean, that, that was my gut feeling, but I don't actually build houses, so I wanted to ask your opinion.
But it, it really doesn't, to me, this is not a design issue. I know it's a design and that's what we're looking at, but on a practicality issue is we cannot stop the water when it is in line or behind. I'd even go for two-foot if that's a compromise in front, something in front, so that you're not dumping all that water in front of a garage door. There is no way to get around that.
Did you explain the water? Are you talking off the roof?
Off the roof, yes.
Okay. And, uh, gutter system couldn't bring it back or is it too?
It's too, you, you just get way too much water coming down a valley situation. And really, the worst times are probably March, April. You'll get that slow freeze at, you know, at night, thaw during the day.
Yeah.
The drips and builds up in front of the garage doors and, and then it just feeds back in. To me, it's more of a practical than a cosmetic.
And to me, it's a matter of trying to find a compromise between the practical and the cosmetic, because I, I think we're, I think we're, I think we're gonna get there. James, you got anything to weigh in on that, on this one?
A little bit, but I'm gonna be the, again, the other one that's on their own little island and so...
Okay, well, tell us about your island.
It, I, I would have sided a little bit more liberal with it being more forward, not the 20-foot situation, but, um, within our design standards, you know, being that 10, 12. But this, I believe, being a five-foot is much more of a compromise within the spectrum of more contemporary home design that we see throughout Zone 5 Midwest building.
Okay, okay. Well, then we're, we're getting close, folks. We're looking at a five-foot option. I, I think we're agreed, we're probably not looking at, at keeping it in line with this principal structure? Is, or do we have a consensus on that? Or Mike, are you still holding out on the keeping it in line? What, what do you think?
Yeah, I, I, you know, I'm just strongly feel that it, it should not be forward, you know, and, and I like the way, um, Councilwoman Stangline put it, that, you know, designing what we want, not replicating what we have. So in line, I think you don't create a, a new valley, I think, which is what Commissioner Peterson's probably describing, we have a valley and focusing water in here. If it's in line, you're able to travel that down, down and across to a corner outlet.
Maybe.
Maybe, and then I apologize for putting words in your mouth that may not be your words. But I, I feel that, that again, uh, you know, when we, when we worked on this ordinance, we had extensive discussion on this and thinking that, that garage forward look, um, was, was really something that we were trying to get away from and get the attached accessory structure back from the primary structure, which is the residence.
All right, all right. Mr. Peterson? You bet.
Here's, even in a frontline, and I, I know everybody's talking about gutters then, they do not work well when it freezes in those particular months. And that's where the biggest issue be, being as a landlord with rentals, me being a builder that I follow. I don't know a builder in the country that is building them back on purpose unless some zoning place has done it. They're all gonna be forward. That way you can get utility rooms behind them, just a design standard throughout the house. We've just changed our building aspects in the last, well, 20 years, 50 years, 100 years. Things have just changed. Nobody had vehicles like that we do today, you know? So that's where it came, the forward stuff has happened. I, I, I like staff recommendations, that's what I would, I like that.
All right, very good. I, I would think my personal observation here is that climate change has affected how we build buildings. And I've talked to more than one person in the construction business that says with the changing climate, and specifically, they're talking about rain in the winter. And it, it's changed the game on it. Um, so at this point, um, you know, we're, we're kind of at a little bit of an impasse. We can certainly, um, if somebody wants, informal, make a little motion at one and what, we could take a vote, because I, I think we're, I think we're close unless somebody can, wants to thread the needle here with a compromise, unless somebody has a way we can kind of, kind of do it. Otherwise, I think we need to kind of, right now, it's looking like about 3-2 in favor of the, of the five-foot. But would we, would, um, with something like three-foot or two-foot, two-and-a-half feet, would that be something that people would be open to? Or is that just gonna be, just kind of messing around?
I'd, I'd like to make a motion to vote on what staff is placed.
Five-foot? All right. And, uh, do we have a second for, uh, for that, that motion?
I will second it.
We have a second, very good. Have we discussed enough or any other discussion, uh, anybody else like to put out there? Yes, well, let's go start with Mike and then we'll go to Tiffany.
Please.
I just, this is probably not, no, I know it's not strictly, um, in line with parliamentary procedure, but I'm, again, I don't build houses, so, it, does the, is it that they're offset? Like, do you have the same effect on that water if you bring the garage back as you do, if you bring it forward? Is it just that it's offset that you need? Or does the garage have to be in front of the house to have that effect?
Garage has to be in front.
Okay.
What you, what, if the garage is set back, you'll have two roof lines and you'll have that V, the water's gonna rush right down in front of your garage or wherever it could be. Most places, it doesn't really matter a whole lot, but you don't want all that water, rainwater, icy water, coming right down in. If it's forward, that means no matter if you have a hip roof or Gable roof, doesn't really matter, it's pushing the water away from the garage door, both ways. It's, and that depends on how far you come in, up, forward. So if you come two foot forward, it'll be pushing it at least two foot away from the garage door. If you come five foot, it, it's still, probably still only gonna be two foot, I guess, when you come five foot, but...
Okay.
Depends on your overheads.
All right, Mike?
You know, well, my, my garage is about 32, I think it's 32 setback from the front facade of the primary structure. I do have some dripping. It's not continuous across the opening, so it could be simply a maintenance issue of, of how well that is addressed, you know, and how quickly you get through snow removal and those sorts of things. I would be willing, I would be willing to, to, to compromise on, on, on a subtle offset. And we'd call a subtle offset, you know, a forward, garage forward, if it's, if it is something that's, that's framable. It's a, and maybe it's a 32 or something like that, you know? So it's, it's a regular stud spacings. Um, I'd be, I'd, I could, I could land there. I'm, I'm not in support of, of the five-foot motion. It, it too much exaggerates and makes the garage the feature and not the principal structure. So I won't, I won't be voting in favor of this, but I would be willing to, to perhaps discuss an alternative that doesn't bring it five feet forward.
I would share, um, Commissioner Duval's opinion on that. Would you, we, anything we can do to get away from the, what's the, the term, the snout look, you know, with the, with the garage out there? At the same time, we have to acknowledge that there are physical problems, challenges on the construction. I probably myself would be more interested in a compromise as well. With that, any other discussion before we take a vote?
So the reason why I do support it and taking in consideration of the discussion. I'm not expecting or planning, given the fact that the, you know, this would be a maximum kind of a situation. But I don't believe builders would necessarily utilize a five foot. But it gives them just a little bit more of a leeway within the situation. It might be more towards that three foot, two foot situation, just so that way they can make things within design standard. Within the standard that we would be setting, they would be able to easily, without a whole lot of thought as to how that would impact their design work. The, there is a fair amount within CN one and CN two that still is open for development. And that's also part of the, the reason why I support the motion. Is that as we're looking at for the ability and availability for other development to occur. Making it as feasible for those interested parties to do so. If I can make it easier for them, then I believe that it's a worthy cause. And I fully understand that the fact that we're trying to, you know, make sure that. In to Commissioner Duval's point, what we would like, or it might have been Commissioner Stangline, but it. What we would like to see built in those specific areas, the problem that I'm seeing is the fact that the market will dictate what is built and where they will build. And I'm, I'm trying to make it as easy without it being giant boxes that are just thrown up with no aesthetic. Points to them whatsoever.
Right, very good.
One more?
Mr. Peterson, you bet.
You're, you're right as far as the setback. It's probably gonna be two foot increments that we're gonna build in. So it's probably gonna be a two foot or a four foot front rather than the sixteen. Just, that's pretty common today for studs. The other thing is, when, we have to warranty houses, you know, kind of, I always think of a car, a one year bumper to bumper, two mechanical, ten year major structural. And it doesn't matter on maintenance, you know, how the, how the court systems work and everything works today. So therefore, if I got water coming into a garage, underneath the garage door at times, the customer is gonna say it's my fault. Whether I did put gutters on or didn't put gutters on, and whether they shoveled the roof or didn't shovel the roof. It's still my issue. So it falls back on the builder. I personally would not do it building. If, if, and I've got acreage that we're gonna be doing something on, and I would not build anything that is straight or set back.
All right, very good. One last call for discussion. Hearing none, I think we're gonna have a divided vote, so if you could get a roll call, James.
Duval.
No.
Norwood.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Stangline.
No.
Gorham.
No. All right, well, that failed, so then I would suggest that maybe.
Before we take a motion.
Yes.
James, would there be an option to put a, as you are in A and C. Where a CUP rather than a variance could be required for something if there's a, if there's a reason on that. You know, particular thing.
Typically, for a dimensional standard, you wouldn't see a, a conditional use permit for that. Conditional use permits are really to kinda protect neighboring properties. So probably wouldn't recommend it, recommend it in that instance. You know, we do see it every now and then, commercial districts, you can't build a building under a thousand square feet without a CUP. So it's, it's possible. Obviously, we're looking at a CUP for lot sizes, so it's possible. I haven't seen it done in another code. So typically, it'd be a variance, variance request.
And then for staff, fee structure wise, what are we looking at as for application for variance?
I believe they've gone up. Take a look here. Sorry. Okay, so residential is three fifty, commercials five hundred, so this would be a residential.
Very good. Well, then, at this point, looking for, I'm, to be exact, but looking for a compromise, if somebody wants to put out a compromise motion. And I think, well, I know, I concede when Mr. Peterson's saying probably two and four feet may be the numbers we wanna look at.
Mr. Chair, if you would, I would move that we change the five foot to two foot. In the staff recommendation K for garage.
All right, is there a second for that? We have a second from Stangline, discussion. James?
I will support the motion.
Good, all right. Any other discussion before we call a vote? Not hearing any. James, could you do one more roll call for us?
Duval.
Aye.
Norwood.
Aye.
Peterson.
Yes.
Stangline.
Yes.
Gorham.
Yes. All right, there we go. We have worked through, worked through the first page, correct? And that leads us to James. Do you wanna, now we're moving on to, moving on to contemporary CN two.
So I'm kinda assuming maybe that we're talking about contemporary neighbors there. I'm not sure if we need to discuss garages within this one as well. It certainly could. You take a look at the, the lot size range. Really, we never, in any of the other districts, you don't have a zero. We have an up to fifteen thousand square feet, so I'm not sure, you know, the reasoning for that. But I, in that one, I'm recommending at least a lot size minimum of five thousand square feet, up to fifteen thousand square feet, and then the same CUP requirement. And then fifty feet to eighty feet, eighty plus requires a CUP. This one, I did my analysis in the Holton area rather than Northtown, because a lot of the Holton areas are new CN two. And, and saw some, some outline things based on some of our, our standards there. The other one is the side yard setback, so once Holton's created and, and fully done, they'd be under the new CN two regulations. And some of our other CN two regulation areas, we had ten foot on this one, which is kinda consistent with our old R one eight. Not really consistent with our CN two development that we had in, in Holton that was smaller, smaller lots. So here, I'm recommending again, going back to what maybe should have been, would be a five foot setback on here. So with that, I'll open it up to discussion.
All right, discussion or questions for James?
I do, just for clarification, Holton neighborhood, just for my.
Subby Brainerd Oaks.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Duval.
Director Krampic, you're, I'm trying to do the math and I'm being terrible at it. These, these enhanced lot sizes will still achieve or hit the, the range of units per acre, is that correct? If, if all of the, all of the lots in a block, for example, choose the maximum, do we still get four to twelve dwelling units?
So this one didn't increase to fifteen thousand square feet. So if they were to go, go larger, you know, obviously, they'd have to be bringing in, you know, duplex or triplex. So we'd review that as part of the conditional use permit about them building a bigger lot. Why are you building a bigger lot? So that's where we'd be looking at density ranges then, to make sure that they're maintaining those.
So with a, with multifamily unit on a, on a fifteen thousand square foot lot, you're getting, you're getting three dwelling units and a triplex.
Yep.
Got it, thank you.
All right, other questions for, or discussion? Do we feel like, yeah, go ahead.
Well, I guess this was, I think the question you were about to ask is, Mr. Chair or James, do you wanna have a motion on the garages again? Or you're good?
Seems like it's probably contemporary neighborhood was, was more the discussion than just the CN one.
Folks, are we good on this? Does anybody want to, do we, I'll proceed with the vote, or is there a consensus? I think we're, we're good. One last chance before we move on. All right, I think, do you have a consensus? That feels good there for you, James? You got enough information there? Very good. Then we're moving on to TN one, TN one changes.
So the next one, TN one, your typical lot sizes are gonna be about fifty by one fifty, about that seven thousand five hundred square foot. We did end up going a little bit lower in our new code to allow five thousand square foot lots. What I'm seeing, you, you'll see, the one that we just looked at tonight, you'll have some, some kinda odd parcels that certainly makes sense to add on to that. I know one of the, the big things that we didn't wanna see was two seven thousand five hundred square foot lots combined with each other. Because a lot of times, you'll see maybe a house burned down, somebody wants to buy the other lot, combine them, and then just put a garage there rather than a home. So the idea here is not to allow double that, which would be fourteen or fifteen thousand square feet. But, but create a little bit of leeway so people can make some common sense consolidations. And then anything larger than that would require a conditional use permit. So certainly, I've seen in, in our traditional neighborhood areas where you'll have a, or a small one bedroom house that's almost on three or four lots. You know, so there would probably make sense to do a, you know, a fourplex. But then also maybe allow somebody to split that in half and then do a duplex instead. So it gives you a little bit more flexibility in that. And then the last part would be if front loaded, must be in line or set back behind principal facade. So we should take a look at the garage standards for this one and see if there should be any, any kinda difference. Should it be the same as contemporary? Should it be different? And with that, I can answer any questions.
All right, questions for James?
Mr. Chair, I do have a question, James.
Go ahead.
TN one and TN two, basically, we're looking at infill for these lots, correct? There's really no development area for.
Not unless you were to actually zone something to wanna see these standards in there. Typically, new zoning's probably gonna be contemporary, so this is, predominantly infill.
Yeah, okay.
All right, other questions or discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Duval.
If, if I'm, am I allowed to get a curb cut or to front load if my TN one or two lot is served by an alley?
You're not.
All right.
All right. Are we feeling good about TN, TN one here? Any other questions, any other thoughts, changes? I, I feel good about it. Got enough information there, James?
Yep.
All right, then we're looking at TN two.
So TN two seemed okay with the garage with TN, with the TN one district. So the one thing, kinda went back and forth in this, and obviously, we have the Oak Street, Kingwood area, someone sells Sixth. It's one of our few districts where we just don't have a lot size maximum. So people could potentially consolidate multiple lots and build one home on it. You know, I was kinda looking at that when we were looking at the My Neighbor to Love Coalition. You know, there's not really a review to, to see how many lots you could potentially consolidate or consolidate on something like this, and then what could be built on those. So with that, I looked at, you know, maybe three city lots and then beyond, that would require a conditional use permit. You know, I, I weighed this one back and forth because it is nice in that TN two district to, to really allow for a lot of things and, and try to attract development in this area. So certainly want the planning commission to have a discussion on this one and, and, and take your recommendation.
All right, questions, discussion points? I'm looking. What, what kinda feedback are you looking for, James? Help me out on this to be more specific. What kinda situations are you concerned about?
So, you know, again, consolidating too many lots without any type of review. You know, for, when, when we wanna see this to be a, a dense development area, and more density certainly than the TN one. So all of a sudden, you know, consolidate multiple parcels into one and really not achieve what, what we're looking for on that. So, so that's where I thought of putting some type of maximum here, certainly more than the traditional neighborhood one, because there are commercial uses mixed into here. I don't wanna make development too difficult, but, you know, so that's, that's where I'm at with this one. Do we have a lot size maximum or don't we?
Are you looking to go, are we going down from twenty-one to four thousand? I'm trying to understand here what we're.
So, so right now, it's four thousand and up, so it's four thousand's the minimum, and then you can have whatever size lot you want beyond that.
Okay, and what, and you wanna replace that with?
So a, a lot of our other, like, general, general commercial, commercial corridor, they don't have lot size maximums either. So that might be appropriate for this one. You know, do we wanna see a review on it if they wanna make a, a large lot on here when we're looking for density? Or, you know, or do we, do we wanna keep it as kind of a free for all, one, four thousand square feet's a minimum, and then you can go however large you want to?
James, there again, I mean, this, this is pretty well, this is a small area we're talking about. And it's almost all along the, you know, already developed heavily anyway, areas. I, I don't think you're gonna have an issue with this, I don't think. And if it does, in my opinion. I'm just looking at the majority of these areas anyway. I, I, I just can't see that happening, so.
The other area that some TN two is kinda down by the, be kinda the arena area where My Neighbor to Love Coalition is. So there's some vacant land in that area still, but a lot of it along our corridors already, are, is already developed.
James?
I might be striking out on my own little island again. Within the lot size and the maximum, even moving up towards twenty-five thousand. Is there any, and I should probably preface the why. As we look at some of, with infill and the, this cross between commercial and traditional neighborhood. Where the, that's where some of these things might end up happening. And so I'm potentially talking about combining three lots for a different format type of business. That would be serving that neighborhood, could easily potentially happen.
This is a hypothetical we're considering.
Hypotheticals, but at the same time, looking at, you know, not just combining two lots, but combining three lots if development were advantageous for that.
Do you think at the three lot size, we'd wanna weigh in and?
I would think beyond the three lot size that we would want to weigh in.
Okay.
So I can see where staff stopped it at anything of three lots. And I am saying that maybe even making it a little bit more feasible for three lots and below to be feasible.
Okay. Mike, you got anything there?
No, I, I think I'm, I'm jiving with the, with the discussion here on, on the three lots. You know, it's, it's, it's Kingwood, it's Oak, it's.
Southwest.
Northwest, northwest, second and third, and then southwest, South Sixth Street or something. I think those are our spots on the map, right?
A little bit on Mill Avenue.
In, in the Mill, excuse me. So we've got these spots and, and, and the TN two, we're wanting to. We're wanting to have sort of that, that neighborhood feel that serves all of your needs, right, within a block. You know, you can walk to the grocery store, you can walk to get your haircut, da, 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 da. You know, so, I mean, that kinda development, dropping a Walmart in there doesn't, doesn't make it, you know. Dropping some large kind of a thing that, that wipes out a number of properties that could be residences, doesn't make it. If you wanna put a large residential complex in there, you may need more room than three, you know. And if, and that's, that is compatible with the TN two, if I'm correct on that.
Yep, that's correct.
So, so I, I, I think you're getting a compromise spot here that, that you, you grab our attention when you go beyond wanting to, to consolidate three lots. We wanna have a, we wanna talk, and it seems reasonable.
All right, it seems like.
Am I hearing in favor of twenty-five thousand?
Yeah, I, I have a kinda, a slightly off the wall question. How big is twenty, help me to think about twenty-five thousand square feet. Help me think about how big that is. Like, this, the lot that the city hall is sitting on. Anybody have a gander of what we're talking about here? Any idea?
Again, you know, the.
Way more than that. We're talking like a hundred thousand square feet.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, my, my lot in, in town is the standard lot, fifty by one fifty, so tends essentially taking my house and two of my neighbors.
About sixty-five hundred square feet?
It's a hundred by two fifty, you're, would get you there, you know, if that's so, as you're spreading out.
All right, very good. With that, are we good with where we're at on TN two? Let the, move along?
So again, just summarize, what's our number here for the max before you need a CUP?
I, I am suggesting twenty-five thousand.
Well, we've got twenty, we have twenty-one thousand, it was what James has written, James Krampic, you're thinking twenty-five thousand. Mike, do you have an opinion on where the number needs to go?
Well, I just wanna be clear on which number we're talking about.
Okay.
So.
I thought we were talking lots.
And, and, well, and lots are gonna, the lots are gonna be twenty-two fifty if you take the standard lot, so you know what I mean? You know, so a fif, a fifty foot by one fifty is seventy-five hundred square feet.
And I would recommend probably the, the twenty-five thousand.
Are we all good with that number? Just, just for the common understanding that which number we're talking about.
And did you pick the twenty-one thousand to avoid having three lots? Was there a reason behind the twenty-one, or is that just kind of a number you were thinking of?
Again, the, I guess I took seven thousand. I probably should have taken seven thousand five hundred. There are lots, you know, depends on if the alley's been vacated as part of the property. Some of them are seven thousand square foot lots, some of them are seven thousand five hundred, so it'd probably be better to go with a larger number.
So we're all good with twenty-five?
Yes.
All right, very good.
Thank you.
Then we are moving on to ADU, moving on to accessory dwelling units. James?
Yeah, so this one, we had a discussion on it. Didn't seem like there was much of a consensus. I did talk about how the, the primary people coming in asking about accessory dwelling units are ones that were licensed rentals. And then wanted to potentially create another rental. So certainly would increase housing, you know, is it too much density for one site? Could it be problems if, you know, the homeowner isn't actually there and it's just another rental? I think that was kinda the thought behind having it be a homeowner occupied structure. But I know there was some excitement about accessory dwelling units, and staff has not seen any of those come through at this time. So this is just an option to potentially remove that language if the primary structure is owner occupied. There are still some conditions that would, if it's, if it's in the middle of a block, it's a conditional use permit. If it's on the corner, it's not a conditional use permit, so there's still, it would be some review if it's, you know, an, an internal lot. So this is just really up for discussion. You know, I, I don't really have a strong opinion either way, but I wanna certainly bring it to the attention of the planning commission. You know, I don't really have a strong opinion either way, but I wanted to certainly bring it to the attention of the planning commission to make them aware that that's probably been one of the biggest hindrances to people moving forward with accessory dwelling units.
Alright, questions for James?
Mr. Chair, please. Dirk Krampic, the, how, i- if, if you remove the primary structure owner is owner occupied, we just got done with the short-term rental business, and how does that, how does that change that relationship? We had a category of some of these, these short-term rentals that if the owner occupied something there, does this change any of that, or does this bring, change the math on any of the SDR stuff?
I don't think it should change the math on any of that.
Okay, so this, you know, if you, if you remove that here for the accessory dwelling unit, it's not gonna upend something with the short-term rentals?
In my opinion, it would not.
Thank you.
Any other thoughts from the group on that? If not, and if you feel like you got the right language there, James, then let's, we're gonna move along to general building development and design.
Does it seem like the, there is a consensus that people are agreement to the language?
I am, I am good with striking the primary structure as owner occupied. I agree with staff.
Alright, consensus is there? Consensus there, then we're moving along. And we are looking at general billing, general building development and design standards. Starting out with the single-family detached residential structure standards. James?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So a couple items in here. First one is getting rid of the orientation on lots. You'll match the orientation of other buildings, predominant orientation of other buildings along the block. You know, that, we've looked at other ones. I know we have the one that's duplex that was built on South Ninth that didn't have an entrance. And, and that picture was shown last week. Certainly it maybe adds some aesthetics if there is, there was other lots on that block that didn't have front entrances. So it certainly adds the aesthetics potentially out of that front door on there, front entrance, whether it's porch, covered entry, that type of thing. So this would be, building primary entrance shall be orientated towards a public street. So it wouldn't have to be, if it's a corner lot, it could be still orientated on another street. The second part showed some pictures of some infill development, particularly some habitat homes, that did a few, did a few things that enhanced the facade, but probably didn't cost a considerable amount to put on there. So staff is recommending some type of code to enhance the facades within our single-family homes, especially when we're looking at these infill projects. So you'd be looking at doing potentially two of the following, could certainly add items to this as well. First one would be a porch enclosed or non-enclosed. Second would be a covered entry. That's just essentially just a, some type of nice covered entry over the door. Window shutters, alternative siding patterns, or brick and stone. So you'd essentially be selecting two of these. And with that, I can answer any questions.
Alright, mission members, anybody wanna weigh in on this one?
I think it's perfect.
Alright.
I have a question for clarification. So with the building primary entrance shall be oriented towards a public street, do we have anything that defines that, that then the address of that primary entrance is the address of the structure?
There is, there is a whole lot of language when you're looking at front yards, rear yards, all that type of stuff. It's in subdivision ordinance, it's in zoning code, you're looking at definitions. So that all gets figured out within that part of it. But, but being able to just at least require a front entrance to be orientated towards a public street, I think would be an improvement from what we have.
And the reason why I question is because whatever the street address for that dwelling unit would be is where I would find the front door.
Yeah, so typically, yes, typically we'd, where your front entrance is, garage is, that type of thing, that's how we'd address it.
Okay.
And so the, the project on Chicago, I have, and we looked at that, we'll have the Chicago, it does, obviously, thirteen oh six. Okay, that answered my own question. Here we go. I like all these points myself. I think, I think they, they get after something that's been bothering me for a while. They have the houses that, you see the side of the house and the street. So I think, I like it. Tiffany, anything? Good. James, do you think you have enough on A? Or do we have a question down there?
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, I'm good with the clarifying language in C. The, the pick list of, of pick two, I talked to James a bit about this, you know, I, I don't know that I could've made a property that I had that has been there since nineteen thirty-nine meet those criteria. You know, and I could, I could put the, I could put the shutters back on it, which looked goofy. Because there were, you know, you had double windows side by triple windows instances, and then one little narrow shutter on each side. And it just, you know, the shutter was just something there, and it just didn't really, it wasn't really additive as far as the aesthetic. Some flexibility in these, you know, it, you know, a picture can, a picture can send somebody in the right direction about what you're talking about. You know, that we're wanting something that's just not, you know, a monotone rectangular box or trapezoidal box. We want something with visual interest and things. And that could be done with, with variations in color, you know, accent trim and those sorts of things. That's, that's not, that's not captured here. There was discussion during last month's meeting that we were talking about colors and things like that. But I think it was in relation to clavards or vinyl siding or things like that. But how you might use color to kind of accent. But also leaving some room for the builder or for the architect to, to bring something different that doesn't necessarily hit, hit these things, but gets at what we want. You know, that, that visual interest that's different from a monotone, same siding, rectangular or trapezoidal box. So I don't know how you get there. But can you, can you put an item, a subitem G sub-six that, you know, allows a conversation across the counter? And you go, yeah, I mean, you got, you know, you can deal with that on the administrative side without sending somebody here. But it, it points them there, gives them some freedom to give you different options.
Like a wild card option?
Yeah, yeah.
Say, I got this idea?
A deuce, deuce.
Okay, alright.
Are you talking colors, like two colors or something added to this?
Or whatever, you know, what, what does the builder come, come up with to say, to add visual interest? You know, and it, or the architect that, that breaks that up? I mean, that's what we're talking about, is make it a little bit...
I get it.
Different than just a plain box with, with fenestrations in it, you know.
Well, he covers that. I, I get what you, that's where color might be, the other thing, or two colors or something is, is another way to get there that you can do.
We phrase it as an alternative option which meets, I'm running out of words, but, James?
So, so I reviewed the property that Mike had redone there. And, and one of the things that I think gives that property interest is the whole front facade isn't, you know, one, one wall. And similar to what my house is, there's a lot of interest because there's, it kind of just this way out, back up. So the walls are staggered, there's creating interest through, through that. It's not just one wall. So, you know, potentially you could have options that, you know, front walls do not actually ten feet in length in, in any of the walls. You could add color patterns to it. And maybe there's another one that, one of, one of them could be essentially that wild card, you know, up to the discretion of the zoning administrator as one of the criteria, maybe not both.
Alright.
And, and it could, you know, it could be roof lines as well, you know, whether it's gables or some different, different lines that don't get super crazy modern design in, in our TN ones and TN twos, but it kind of gets you there.
We'd have to limit it if we get like a Green Bay Packer planning commit, you know, guy down the road. He might let a Packers helmet on the front of a...
It's King Flamingo's, yeah, yeah, yeah. Alright, so a little off track here, but James?
For the sake of moving it forward, the item six being other architectural design elements that would create visual interest?
I think that, I think that...
That opens the door enough to what?
To talk to James to say, so what do you mean by this?
Because architectural elements that create visual interest is definable. It, when you look at all the different things, I did a Google search, and it starts listing them all. And so there's a lot of them that are in there that, you know, aren't necessarily encompassed within that situation. But the, the idea is the fact that if I can Google it, well, what is a visual interest element?
And we'd do the same.
Yeah.
We're looking for wiggle room, and I think we're getting close to it here. Tiffany, any thoughts before we?
I mean, I like the idea of having, or something else with consultation from, or approval from community development in some way.
What we're looking for is something that is distinct yet harmonious, right? Is that kind of what we're seeking for?
And maybe the caveat on item six would be the fact that it with community development approval of that.
I can work with that.
Whatever it is.
Yeah, whatever that is. Because, so within those kinds of elements that you might be able to Google, it's going to say landscaping. That might be something that we might wanna see, you know. Well, I'm gonna put landscaping in front of it. Cool. But what exactly does your landscaping mean? Because sometimes when you build an ice machine, you know, that's on the corner lot. Sorry, too soon.
You went there.
So when you say landscaping, it just giving it, it might be more necessary for development, community development to have a little bit more oversight on what that visual interest piece is.
I like it sticking to the structure myself, but that's, that's about what I would wanna stick with on that one. James, are we giving anything to work with here? Do you think we're getting close to the...
Yeah, I think that would be, I think, in my opinion, that'd be a good six one, and then adding alternative siding patterns or color. Maybe to that one.
Okay. Welcome working with that one? Alright, then we're moving on to B. We're looking at attached, single-family residential structures, duplex, triplex, and fourplex.
Yep, so this one is pretty quick here. The first one would be going from five hundred square feet to four hundred square feet, which is the minimum required in our apartments. So this, you could go, essentially go down to four hundred square feet in duplexes, triplexes, or fourplexes. This is brought up by former commission member Francis.
Did you say former?
Former.
Former.
Yes.
Oh.
We, we accepted his resignation on that day.
Oh, I did not know about that. Well, I'm sad, sad to hear that. Okay. Alright, so, any points? Anybody wanna weigh in on anything here? Are we good with, with this?
Yes.
Yeah.
I will say yes.
Alright. And so we're, we're approving here, are we, is this the entire section to B, or are we just looking at two right now?
Two right now, and then the next one would be, all conversions shall require a conditional use permit and comply with all standards of the base zoning district. So this would be, you know, I could see there being some concern in some of our kind of traditional neighborhoods, some of our historic homes, about kind of haphazard, you know, chopping buildings up. Maybe things don't look, or quite look right in the, in the neighborhood or fit the neighborhood. So staff's recommending a conditional use permit when you're doing a conversion. This wouldn't be for a new construction.
I can get behind that. Anybody, any other thoughts from the group on that one, on four? Tiffany?
I like that I understand the new language better than what we have.
Alright, alright.
So.
I think we have a consensus that we're good on point four. And you got enough to work with? Yeah, we're not changing anything, so you got enough to work with. Let's move on to item five.
So next one would be, multi-family dwelling units shall incorporate balconies, covered porches, or staggered wall patterns. You know, still looking for potential thoughts from the commission on this one. You know, maybe the existing language we have is good enough to, to figure this, you know, to, to, to work with this. You know, obviously, when, when we were looking at the eight oh five Laurel Street project, that's kind of similar to that first picture that I have on there where their ground level, in order to meet setbacks, is, is kind of one setback. But then as you go up, they had, you know, kind of staggered patterns with our, the potential eight oh five Laurel Street project. So that's kind of my thought process behind kind of some of the staggered walls. The next one, you'll see balconies in there, again, staggered walls to kind of create some interest. You're not creating one box here. So trying to, trying to define before it was a little bit more ambiguous. This one's maybe defining exactly what we're looking for. Balconies, staggered walls, covered porches, rather than just trying to find design elements that are interesting. However, this does go through a conditional use permit process, so maybe that's good enough for, you know, review of the planning commission, the city council to, you know, see is that, you know, is there actual visual interest there? So just wanted the planning commission to consider this. Should we add additional language to require some of this? Or do we just kind of leave it up to a CUP and when somebody comes in for review?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Peterson? My, my impression is leave it up as it is, up to a CUP. That way discussion can be had with, depends on the neighborhood and a lot of different things. I'm just thinking if different lots could propose different things upon it to, whether you can jut out or not. And, and you have complete control of it at that point.
Okay, this thing one.
I mean, I, I hear you. I hate pop quizzes, though. I don't want them to be surprised that we're looking for this, right, in their CUP. I am wondering if we can take some of the, that idea of, we, we wanna have something like one of these things or, and copy that language from above for the wild card, like, or come up with something else.
I could maybe incorporate it into kind of our existing language, so they know, maybe this is what we, what we're looking for.
Yeah.
So it's not just a create visual interest type thing.
Right, I like that we're giving them...
But maybe it doesn't say it shall have this.
Yeah.
Okay, the menu.
Yeah.
Okay, so that was C three, and we're good with C three, then where are we, C five?
So, just, just to, if, if I could have a summary of what we decided on three here.
Okay, fair enough.
Just to make sure, where, where are we going that?
I don't have the existing language in there. Probably should've included that. But I think what we would end up doing is just adding this to some of our existing language. It talks about design elements within multi-family and include, include this language into it. Just so developers know that this is, again, something that the city's looking for, but it would still come through that CUP process. So I wouldn't say it shall incorporate these, one of these elements.
Okay, thank you.
Then, C five.
C five, I'm not sure if I had to misnumber, but this kind of goes back to, again, what we talked about with single-family. These would be single-family attached dwellings, so this would be your duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes. Again, creating those same language, bill, building common entrance or unit entrances shall be orientated towards a public street. And then, we'd like to have some discussion on that. You know, if you have a duplex, could you have a front entrance and a rear entrance? I could see potential in something like that. You know, certainly when we were looking at this from an aesthetics perspective, having two front doors and row houses was kind of something that I know the planning commission, city council really liked. So, you know, this, this would still give you, if there's a main entrance and you had, you know, say a triplex or a fourplex, they could still have their separate doors, but the main entrance would still be facing the street. And then, again, incorporating two of those following design elements. Again, maybe we just use what we picked on the last one for, for single-family homes. So with that, I can answer any questions.
Would we wanna add the, the wild card to this one, or are we good with this five? Any thoughts on that?
I would say adding what we added to the last one would be my recommendation.
Just replicating it, moving on. That sounds good. We all good with that? And we are on to our D. We're looking at commercial use design construction standards within a whole pile of districts.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this one, not having the Makers Employment PSP district, looking at adding that to the commercial use design standards for construction. Also, new buildings constructed didn't have the general commercial or PSP district in there either. So, looking as well, we talked about different types of metal options that we're seeing now, not just the metal siding with exposed fasteners, but there's some really nice, kind of larger metal pieces that they're using for construction of new apartments and, and new stores that I think, you know, could potentially be allowed upon a conditional use permit. So adding that language to it, but then also adding metal siding with exposed fasteners shall be prohibited. So no longer even allowing that within our commercial districts. They, at that point, they could use still, you know, similar, similar metal siding that we see out here, which would be the non-exposed fasteners, the standing seam metal siding, which I think aesthetically, in my opinion, does look nicer than the, the traditional, kind of that exposed fasteners with the ribbed material for metal siding. So with that, I can answer any questions.
Mr. Peterson, any feelings about the exposed fasteners?
You know they're...
You know, there is. But I think it's going nowhere.
Well, do you want to let, let the group know what you're thinking here? It's fair that we all.
I don't have a problem with the exposed fasteners.
You're okay with that? All righty.
No, I do have a problem with it, but I don't think it's going to matter.
Okay, well, there we go. All right. And is everybody else good on four? Are we ready to move along there? Or pardon me, D four? Yes.
And I just want to note that it still would be allowed in the industrial district.
Okay, yeah, very good, very good. Fair enough. Well, that, if that's the case, then we're moving on to industrial use design construction standards. Anything in there?
Yeah, so I'll, I'll kind of cover both things. The first one is any structure in the industrial district within 300 feet of the, any adjacent business with some of our major thoroughfares. Got rid of the within 300 feet and just went to adjacent to. This is staff's recommendation because there's at times areas where you wouldn't even see an industrial building from this road. It's maybe on the backside of a property where they'd still then have to meet those commercial design standards. So this is really your visual impact as you're driving under major thoroughfares have to have the construction standards of commercial, but then, you know, beyond that, they would not have to meet that. The second one is accessory building. I've seen this in kind of multiple industrial areas. And sometimes what people are proposing, a lot of times you'll have obviously your main office or industrial building, but then they need a, a large shop. So I think the 30% in my opinion, you know, is maybe too low. Staff's recommendation would be to go to 100% of the size of the principal building. You know, if you do have to go, you know, larger, you have multiple buildings again, too. Sometimes it could then either require a variance or a PUD. That's kind of a, a long process. And with our industrial zoning districts, trying to create that flexibility where they can have the principal building, but then also build a, a large shop or storage area for them, I think would be appropriate. So with that, I'll open it up to discussion.
Thoughts from the group? James?
Outdoor storage? How does this affect within that part of that situation?
So this would not affect outdoor storage at all. This is just when you're building a structure.
Okay.
All right. Go to Thalia.
I.
Anything?
When the accessory building is as big as the main building, it stops, it, it becomes the main building. And I, yeah. I guess I have, I have concerns. Maybe 30 is too small, but I want the accessory building to still be accessory to the main building.
If they want a bigger, a build, another building the same size, they have to go through the process of building up.
Right.
Okay.
And they, they have to go through the process. So I guess.
I wonder if I could.
Go down to Mike.
I wonder if I could take off from there. And a while ago, we handled a, a building replacement at Anderson Brothers. And I don't know how that relates, but the building was to, was accessory to the business with the offices are in one location. And this was a monster building. And it was to bring dump trucks and front end loaders and big equipment in and out of the weather so you can work on it. Did we handle that differently? Or, or would that be an example of how we would handle this, this nuance here? Or?
So that was, so that was past staff. I did, because Anderson Brothers did recently redo their aggregate lab. I made them clean that up. So now they're separated into two parcels. On the one parcel, the shop is the primary building. And, and on the other parcel, it's the, the actual office building. So I've, I've recently cleaned that up. But Anderson Brothers, you know, comes to mind for one of them where you have an office building. And then, you know, you need mechanic shops and, and these larger outbuildings. So that's where I'm recommending the 100% only in the industrial. You know, certainly in your neighborhoods, your commercial areas, you don't want some large accessory building. But it, to me, as a, from a staff recommendation, it potentially makes sense in industrial use.
If, if I might. It's not a great, it wasn't a great parallel to, to, to this then, if we handle it differently.
To slip in, is there any other examples you can think of that we've been looking at in industrial areas that where this would have been helpful to a developer or something?
There's, I can't remember the name of it. They do like speakers and it's a digital, something, they ended up connecting it to the building. They were looking to have it, you know, not connected because it would, it would have been cheaper and really wouldn't have changed anything else. But then you would have had to go through a longer process. So they ended up just connecting to the building.
Very good.
And?
Let's go Mr. Peterson, then we'll head over.
Well, I think what James is getting at and what, this is where businesses are. And maybe you have an idea and you're going to build, you know, eight Coke bottles a year. And then all of a sudden you get a big contract and you got to do 4,000. So it's an increase of this business. It's an industrial park. So they maybe didn't know going in that they needed to grow. And I think he's just trying to make it easier for them to grow. And, and you're right, the accessory may very well be bigger than the other because of that reason.
I can see that point. Tiffany, are you?
Wasn't there like the materials testing or something?
Yeah, there was some.
And there was.
Something separate.
Something about that, yeah.
Remember that?
For which one?
The Anderson. Non-destructive testing that was done on.
Yeah, so we had to do a variance on that because again, that accessory building would have exceeded the, the size of it. So they ended up getting a variance, exceeded the 30%. Another example, we toured Giovanni's from the EDA. They want to expand. I think they're able, their storage for their trucks, that type of thing. And again, probably would run into, to issues for the storage of their trucks in, in their garage if they did expand.
Okay. So could UPS put their trucks inside one of these accessory structures?
If they built it.
Okay.
That's, that's kind of where I'm heading is, is that within the industrial situation, there is going to be times where you do need a larger storage facility than what may exist with the primary structure. And it, there's countless different variables that could require for that to happen. And so I appreciate the fact that, you know, the main, the primary building should be the big building. But it, within industrial settings, there's too many different variables that.
And right now, the code says that it couldn't be larger than the primary building. So it's allowed to go up to 100% of the primary building where the previous one was, it can only be 30% of the primary building.
Yeah, and that's, I agree with what staff is suggesting for up to 100%. Anything beyond that would then end up requiring review.
Do we have a consensus? Tiffany, are you ready to assign on this one?
I, I want, I have one more question.
Let's, let's hear it.
Okay. When you say industrial accessory buildings, or are we talking accessory buildings in the, in industrial zones?
That's how, that's how it would be. So I haven't changed it in the actual table in the industrial, but it would have to be changed in there as well.
Okay.
And potentially maybe it's just changed, I'll take a look at the wording because we wouldn't want an industrial use and grandfathered one in, in some other zoning district. But that would still have to meet the base district standards and even like a general commercial. So say it's industrial use in a general commercial. The general commercial only allows for such a large accessory structure. So you have to actually go with a smaller one in that, you know, if the code language here says it, you still have to go with the smaller one in the base district.
I think my brain fried somewhere in there, but I believe you understand what my question was and what I was trying to get to. So, okay.
I'll ensure that it, that it wouldn't apply to other zoning districts.
I almost think the word accessory, it kind of throws us off here because I keep thinking sheds and greenhouses and things like that. And really what we're talking about is just putting another building up. And maybe the word accessory isn't the best one, but anyhow. I'm good with it personally. I'm good with E as we, as we're, the staff has proposed. Without Mr. DeVall, anything else?
Just again, just to summary, point of clarification that a, 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 a larger than 100% gross floor space would be allowed by CUP. Is that, is that, so the process to exceed is available. All we're simply saying is this is what you can do administratively.
That's correct.
Got it.
All right. I think we're, I think we've got E. Turn the page. We have other items.
Yes, just other items that I, I had to look through, or I'm going to have to look through a few sections of code just to make sure it meets everything. So it's not quite in, in code format yet, but we talked about it. Transparency, a minimum of 75% of the front facade between two and eight feet above the sidewalk must be comprised of transparent, non-reflective windows into the commercial space. A minimum of 25% of the windows shall have views directly into and out to the ground floor occupied space. I did take a look at the Duluth zoning code for this one and did like the language on this one. So I recommend applying it to the Main Street District and Town Center, Overly District, and the Commercial Corridor District.
I like that. I think one of the worst things I've ever seen in downtown areas is when the walls get, get put up. I know there was a, a former bar, well, maybe still current, a, a, a former bar owner that said, people don't want to be seen when they're drinking during the day. And we want to keep those, we don't want transparent windows. We want to go right up to the very top. But I think that really kind of goes against what, what you're trying to do in a downtown area and things like this. So I, I, I like it as written personally. Other thoughts?
I think that's a great argument for why we should have transparent windows right there.
All right. There we go. Well, they come out of smoke, see, catch them there. All right. And I guess we have item two there. Have we covered item two yet? Nope.
Okay, but then the last one is allowing the mixed-use development in the Commercial Corridor District, similar to the Main Street District, which prohibits ground floor residential units. I know we discussed this a few times and certainly staff is still recommending that.
Strongly in favor.
I'm on board with that. Anybody else?
Who was you coming?
I am strongly in favor. And I am encouraging.
Others to be in favor?
No, not just that. I'm encouraging all developers, hey. Please come build a mixed use.
So would, would allowing, Mr. Chair, if I may, I'm sorry.
Certainly.
Would allowing residential use in the back, you know, say the, the some percent of the floor, the back half of it is residential? We had this discussion for Main Street, remember?
Yeah, with Teresa.
With Teresa, you know, that you maintain the commercial use on the street side, but would you use the, a, the backside of that main level for non-commercial uses? In other words, residences or things like that? If I'm going to put up a large mixed-use building, would there, would there be interest in having residential use on that lower level as an example? Or would you want it all to be, to be commercial? We're having the same conversations around 805 Laurel, right? That part of that is going to be commercial.
Yeah, so 805 Laurel, that one, that one's in the Town Center, Overly District. So that's where we had that requirement on the, kind of the front side. You could put potential standards where, you know, 50% of the front has to be commercial space. 50% could be potential residential space. You know, I'm not sure, I'm not sure how city council would look at it. Certainly probably easier to pass just the Main Street District standards. Certainly they could be open to it as well, so.
Just to be clear, I, I, I think, you know, the, the portion that's facing Washington should be all commercial. You know, so that we don't have the residential popping, popping out in, in there. I, I think it makes sense to have that all be commercial, but on the backside of, of that, you know, so you get your store, storefronts all there on, on facing Washington. Parking is someplace behind. But then could we use the residential areas of Laurel?
I'll just weigh in here. I'm a little skeptical on that because I think that if you have a, if, if this is, this is your building here, this is your street, and you're going to have your storefront up here, every storefront needs a back one. And every storefront needs things in the back. I also worry a little bit about what the residential experience would be stuck in the back of a store. But that's just, I don't know, not, just thoughts and concerns. Others? James?
Within the concept of what is being discussed, it, the back half doesn't necessarily have to be used for the commercial space of the front side of that situation. It could be used for bike storage or, you know, of the residents above it. It just can't be a dwelling unit if I'm understanding what is being proposed. And so it, it could still be amenities allowable for the dwelling units that exist above it. But it's, it's just not where there would be a dwelling unit.
Be like some of those quirky businesses we have in Washington, right? By Hardee's over there, where you have, where you go in the back and there's businesses in the back. Kind of quirky, but whatever. Sure. Any thoughts on this? Does anybody want to put an alternative idea? Or do we go with what we have sitting out here on number two?
No, I'll step, I'll step back on it. I'm not going to die on this one, but it just.
You know, I, I think in another era, when, with entrepreneurs and storefronts and people like this, I think it made a lot of sense. That was where the family would live. That's certainly not a, it's not a new idea that the family would live in the back. And, but I, I, yeah. So I think we're good on two, James. I think we've worked our way through that. Any other questions you have of us? Anything we've left unfinished here?
Not from staff. I guess if there's anything from the planning commission that they'd like to discuss, certainly could do that. But from a staff perspective, I think we covered everything.
I would like to discuss, get a chance.
Well, is it relevant to this? Or do you want to do it during the, during the committee reports or your?
It, it kind of delves into the design standards.
Let's hear it, let's hear it then. Let's go for it.
Well, one of the, the projects we're working on right now is that, that had passed before I was on this from another gentleman. We're doing storage units that we are selling by on Delwood Drive by Menards. All right, so we're in the process now. We're right, it, it's a metal building. Only 50% of the front facing Delwood can be metal. So you've got 50% of a one product color, 50% of another. It is going to be the ugliest building ever. So that would be the one thing I would look at in the industrial or really in anywhere. 50% is just a bad number. 20%, 25, so that you've got a mix. So what we're going to have is a 20-foot wall facing Delwood, 20 by 40. And we're going to have metal going up 11 foot by 40. And it'll be something different, 11 foot by 40. That's not going to look well.
Okay.
So, you know, if you, you think of a, a metal buildings, usually they have wainscoting, which we're doing around the rest of the building. I don't know what my boys figured, three or four foot going around. I mean, it's probably too late for this one, but that is, that is not the best number to have. 50% cannot exceed is what I would say.
All right. Is this something we want to go with or maybe revisit it down the line? What are we thinking here? Are there, are there other thoughts in the group on, on this one?
I want to hear from James and what.
All right.
Do you know, do you understand and?
So what I'm seeing, we saw it with the coal storage building as well, that the city put up. It was kind of just a 50/50 half. Where I see there being an impact is when we're looking at larger buildings, like a FedEx, the potential crypto mining facility where there's, you know, you can design with, with a mix on it. And in those instances, it looks nice. So maybe, maybe there's some type of standard that if you're a certain number of square footage or front facade square footage, that you have those requirements, otherwise you wouldn't. So it's the smaller buildings that it tends to look odd.
Could we open it up to 70, 30, 60, 40, more creative splits perhaps?
Yeah, I could, I could look at, I could look at language for it.
Okay. Sound good to you, Mr. Peterson?
Yeah, I, I think something has got to be done.
Okay. So, and then where's our, what's our next step? Are you, are we going to have a, a finished ordinance for a hearing at the next meeting? Or where are we?
So, so next step, I believe I'll bring a finished ordinance, but it'll still be in discussion form. Make sure we, because it's such a large ordinance that we'll have here. I want to make sure we've dotted our i's, crossed our t's, and, and we've gotten a full review of it. And then at that point, we'll bring it to the meeting after for a public hearing.
James?
For clarification on the last item, for Commissioner Peterson, this is specifically in general industrial zoning? That we're talking about the 50% situation?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
All right.
Just want to make sure that it's specifically to that zoning district. Okay?
Got some there, Jim?
James, when, when we come back and as part of that, can you include some illustrations? You know, I love pictures. I'm thinking that the rough line thing would be good to have pictures on.
Certainly.
Thank you.
All right. Very good.
Mr. Chair, just, so are we going to pick up this, this metal siding piece in the next draft that you bring us at our next meeting? Or are we doing a separate track on that?
Yep, I'll just include language on that, that you guys can include in it, change, or just strike.
Because while we get this thing open.
All right. I think we have made our way through seven, I just want to commend all my fellow commissioner members, this was a good discussion and very, uh, productive, it was good. Let's move on to item eight, public forum time allocated for citizens to bring matters not on the agenda to the attention of the commission. Time limits may be imposed. Do we have anybody online?
Nope.
Do we have anybody in presence who would like to comment? No? All right, then we're moving on to, uh, I will close that. And we'll move on to staff reports. We'll start out with, uh, James.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, so I wanted to update a few things here with some of the meetings. City council at their last meeting approved both the garage ordinance and the prohibition of crypto mining and outdoor storage. Uh, the EDA held a special meeting last night to discuss, uh, the redesign of the crypto facility on TC Drive, uh, which is now entirely enclosed within a building before it was outdoor storage. Uh, the EDA approved the revised purchase and development, uh, agreement and construction drawings contingent upon BPU extending the power agreement. Also, I noted earlier, Commissioner Francis resigned, Commissioner Grunewald also resigned, that'll be at the next, uh, city council meeting. Uh, they did say that they enjoyed working with everybody, enjoyed their time on planning commission, but did have other commitments come up. Uh, and last but not least, uh, this weekend, downtown will have the Touch a Truck and Flapjack Festival for kids to come out and get in the trucks and all you can eat pancakes for $10 and, and I believe that money goes, it's a donation that goes towards the water tower, relays and, uh, costume contests, uh, costume contests as well as pancake eating contests, so a lot of fun downtown. Laurel Street, uh, in the Laurel Street parking lot, and that'll be 10 to noon. That's everything.
Thank you. Moving on to item 10, commission member reports. Tiffany, what you got?
So, Commissioner Duval was there, um, at the, oh, sorry, did I steal the, steal your report? We were at the Rosenmeyer Forum last night on housing, and I would recommend, um, tuning in and, and watching the, the YouTube version of it, because it, it should be, because CLC has a new, new person. Sean reported to us on Monday, yeah? Yeah.
Did you learn all of something?
Yes, yes. The, uh, so if you go and carload at the Flapjack Festival and the Touch a Truck, then you can go to the Arboretum for the 50th anniversary of it not being our city dump anymore. And, um, so that actually starts at 11:00. But they're going to have some sort of bird of prey, they don't know what kind yet, is going to be released in the afternoon. And there's a medallion hunt scavenger thing, it's going to be fun. And you can burn off some of the pancakes.
Like a wild bird of prey being released?
Yes.
Whatever they catch.
Well, it depends on like, it's Wild and Free is going to release some sort of.
The bird of prey is TBA.
Yes, the, the exact species is TBA.
Very good.
And I've not done it, I've not done it. So I went to the MinDOT, just because I think y'all might be people who would find this interesting. I went to the MinDOT open house on the 210 371 project, and I have handouts, if anybody wants to take a look at them. Including this, which is different kinds of interchanges and how you get through them. You may look at this, but I, I, I need to keep this. Like, this is valuable information here, that I am allowing you to look at.
Can't mark it up or anything? Is that it?
That's it.
That was an epic report, I like it.
You should have heard my one on Monday night, that was.
I'll YouTube it. James?
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report. Dave?
I have nothing to report.
Mr. Duval?
I'm looking forward to, I think, uh, comments at last month's meeting to visit crypto data centers, um, things of that, so I'm looking forward to a discussion like that, and I hope that we'll be able to figure out where we plug that into our, our list of things to do. I think we'll be talking about that October, I think is our next review of that, so.
Sounds good. That's all?
That is all.
No handouts?
Very much, no handouts, though. To go back to the Rosenmeyer Forum, the state has invested 1. X billion dollars in housing and so there's a whole plethora of new programs that are going out. So these were presented there and how they'll hit the road. And, you know, dollars coming to the city of Brainerd, dollars coming to the counties and such, that, that will work towards, um, in various ways, either, um, as, as affordable housing options for tenants or revenues to, um, repair properties. And so we'll see some of this turning into, and some of it may end up before us here as well, in, in certain manifestations, so. That is all.
All right, with the money, uh, just a quick question, would that be coming through, um, the, uh, which, who locally would be doing this? Would it be, uh, the HRA that would be doing that, you think?
Well, Minnesota Housing will be doing grants that, um, some of it goes directly to the city, some of it will go through and be administered by the HRA, and that money would be going out like as grants and other, other ways of distributing that to make things happen.
Very good. All I have to add is, uh, learning that this is the 50th anniversary of the dump being closed, I feel old. I, I remember the old dump, the old dump was just horrid, you guys, it was just like the edge of the earth, and we just pushed things off the edge of the earth. It was, it was sad. All right, with that, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I hear it, do I have a second?
Second.
Oh, I'm ready to say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign? We're adjourned.